Captain, please.
We have a problem. We thank you for the blessings of this state. We thank you for the blessings of all this county and its officials to create a general guidance and to make good decisions when we need to do it. Please, Captain, as far as this county wishes.
Can I add, please, a question again? We get a motion to approve minutes on August sixth, please.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation, transfer of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item two today? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds.
Questions or comments in regards to item three? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution authorizing the Sota County engineer to request the director of the Ohio Department of Transportation to review engineering and traffic investigation regarding County Road 476 High Street.
Questions or comments in regards to item four today? Hearing none?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Uh, who falls for a second, will you, Captain? Hearing none? Where is that? I believe it's set here. Put on your phones and see if we can pick it up. Test one, two, test. Brian, how you doing?
Down bottom.
There we go. Test one, two, test.
Testing one, two, test one, two. How we doing now? Okay, I'll just hold the mic. You okay now? All right, okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Did you give me a vote for the resolution? I don't remember.
Um, we actually did on item four.
I didn't like it, Kathy, and I didn't know you gave it to me.
We had the vote, and now we're moving to item five.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous reports.
Questions or comments in regards to item five today? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
No second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting amended certificate from the Budget Commission.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item six today? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of notification from the Ohio Department of Taxation regarding the second quarter casino revenue.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item seven? Hearing none?
Uh, motion to accept.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of contract amendment between Job and Family Services and the Counseling Center regarding non-emergency transportation services.
Questions or comments in regards to item eight? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution congratulating Lori Johnson on her retirement from the Sota County Auditor's Office.
Questions or comments in regards to Lori's retirement? I'd like to say we appreciate everything that Lori's done with the county.
Absolutely.
Over the many years of service, and we wish her very well in her retirement. Hearing none?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and then annulled certificates, total amount three hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four and twenty-five cents.
Questions or comments in regards to item ten? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of approving the easement right-of-way map for the West Portsmouth Sanitation Project Site regarding Sota County Sanitary Engineering Department.
Questions or comments in regards to item eleven? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
No second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of approving the easement right-of-way map for the Purtee Acres Sanitation Project Site regarding Sota County Sanitary Engineering Department.
Questions or comments in regards to item twelve today? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of issuing the owner's certificate of right-of-way to USDA for the West Portsmouth Sanitation Project Site regarding Sota County Sanitary Engineering Department.
Questions or comments in regards to item thirteen? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
No second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of issuing the owner's certificate of right-of-way to USDA for the Purtee Acres Sanitation Project Site regarding Sota County Sanitary Engineering Department.
Questions or comments in regards to item fourteen? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Do you have anything additional at this time, Mrs. Coleman?
Aye, not at this time.
Mr. Crabtree?
No, sir.
All right. Um, all right. Members of the public or the press? Items on the agenda?
On the agenda, uh, from Bill Shope, uh, seven and eight.
Seven and eight, um, the item seven, of course, is, uh, as expected, the, uh, second quarter casino revenues were down considerably, um, and the Ohio Department of Taxation's second quarter casino revenue was sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-three cents, which was down two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-six cents from second quarter of 2019, and down two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and five dollars and sixty-six cents for the year. Uh, on item, which was the other one?
Item eight.
On item eight, the non-emergency transportation budget went up, uh, for Job and Family Services, and the, uh, the contract amendment, that original contract period effective from July first, 2019 through June thirtieth, 2020, between Sota County Department of Job and Family Services and the Counseling Center, uh, was to be amended to add forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-four cents, increasing the total contract value from two eighty-four, six seventy-eight to three thirty-two, three sixty-four, eighty-four, effective April first, 2020 through the contract year ending June thirtieth, 2021. All other terms of the contract, including prior amendments, remain the same. All right? Okay, items, uh, off the agenda.
Um, from Bill Shope again. Off agenda, last week Commissioner Crabtree stated he would like to see more accuracy in COVID-related numbers. Exactly, please, what numbers was he referencing? Thank you.
Ryan, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Uh, last week Commissioner Crabtree stated he would like to see more accuracy in COVID-related numbers. Exactly what numbers was he referencing?
If you ask a question?
Um, from what we're hearing, the, uh, the numbers of, of, uh, cases and the numbers of, uh, actual positive cases and everything, and some of the, um, uh, information that we're hearing on, uh, different news medias and that indicate that there's, uh, a lot of inaccuracies in those, uh, particular positive cases and also in the deaths. I don't know what those numbers should be, and I don't know whether they're accurate or not. And I think there's a lot of questions that people have nationwide as to how accurate those numbers can be, and if some of those are being exaggerated for the benefit of the hospitals or for the health department. It would be nice to know that. We may never know that. But, uh, but there's still a lot of, uh, a lot of information, a lot of misinformation out there, and a lot of complaints about, uh, the fact that, uh, people don't, either don't think the numbers are correct, or they're not consistent from one state to another. So, are we gonna get accurate numbers? Maybe, in the final tally, we may, I don't know.
There was a, uh, report just, if I'm not mistaken, it was last night, in regards to cases being recorded more than once. Uh, you go in the hospital, you are tested, you're positive, or you don't go in the hospital, you're tested positive, you have to be tested negative before you can return to work, before you're declared, uh, COVID-free. You can be tested multiple times, and, and from what we're understanding, matter of fact, the, uh, the, the special that was on last night was in, was Ohio, they talked about Ohio specifically, where there was individuals being counted more than once because they were being tested more than once, but each test counted as a new case. Uh, and that is severely skewing the numbers. Uh, now, is that happening locally? Uh, we don't know, 'cause they're not releasing that information. Uh, I would ask, and I, I agree with Commissioner Crabtree one hundred percent, uh, the Ohio Department of Health needs to be more open about how many cases have been counted more than once, whether those cases are repetitive. I don't think that violates HIPAA laws at all. It's more transparent and lets the public know in a much more accurate way just how many cases we truly have. I asked this question to our EMA, uh, not too long ago, and I was told that that is not happening here. So, I, I pray that that's the case. I believe that, that's what they say, uh, to be true, but we know that that is not the case everywhere. And if the number is small in one individual neighborhood or community, all right, that may seem like a minor thing for that community, but when you multiply that by thousands of communities and cities in the state of Ohio, um, hospitals, hospitals have to directly report now, um, they're directly reporting, um, to, I think it's HHS now, or, or somebody like that, it's not CDC anymore, but, um, you know, what, those numbers could multiply quickly because of the sheer number of, and magnitude of reporting agencies. So, um, I think it's something that needs to be addressed, I agree, and, and we need to know true numbers. I think transparency needs to be better. Um, we hear a lot of complaints about this from the public, and I think that the health departments need to be more transparent, as much as they can be, under Ohio Department of Health guidelines, I know that they answer to them, so we would ask that the Ohio Department of Health be more transparent than what they are now. There are other states being much more transparent than the Ohio Department of Health. True?
True.
Okay.
Uh, Bill would like to know, uh, what is the source of the reports that you were signing?
Um, I believe that was on the Laura Ingram's show last night.
Um, from Bill Shope again. Are the commissioners satisfied with the progress being made at Sota County Children's Services during the course of 2020?
I need to ask you to repeat that again.
Are the commissioners satisfied with the progress being made at Sota County Children's Services during the cur, course of 2020?
Anybody wanna go first?
Well, I think they, they still have problems. I don't know, you know, we, we have, uh, a couple children have died within last year, and I think that, uh, they have a lot of problems. I don't know what exactly they have done, I know they indicated that they have made some progress. Uh, we can't have another death in Sota County. Uh, whatever it is that, that, you know, caused the death of these two children, uh, that needs to be assessed, and we need to make sure that we eliminate that. We can't, we can't have children dying because they're placed in the wrong place, and they're, and they're placed with, they are placed with, uh, family members is the ones that's killing them. The two, uh, high-profile cases were actually parents on one indication and, and grandparents on the other. So, you know, I think they need to, no matter what they do, they need to do background checks, they need to make sure that everybody who is providing foster care for these children gets checked out, gets a criminal background checked, gets drug checked, uh, you know, we gotta do everything we can for the safety of the children. In spite of, you know, the fact that the state wants everybody to be unified with family again, we need to make sure that if that happens, it's in a safe environment and it's in a suitable environment for the children. Other than that, I, I can't answer as to what exactly Children's Services is doing now, or what they intend to do in the future, but I do know that there's a lot of issues going on, and, and they need to try and figure out what that is and what we can do to make it better.
The only thing I might add is that, um, um, with the interim director, we've had two, and, um, it's been a while since, uh, Dr. Fuller was there full-time, and so there were a lot of things that needed to be, uh, worked on. And so, when you're switching from one interim director to another, and it's my understanding there, one of them had health issues, and I think that they were making progress, and then I think during that time, uh, they, they had taken several steps forward and several steps backwards during that time. But with the, um, hiring of the new director, we met with him, and had discussion with he and the board, and I came away with positive feelings that he's going to do everything, and is already doing very, you know, a lot to, um, correct the issues, uh, that, what we're gonna say, are there problems with Children's Services policies and so forth? So, um, we'll, we'll just have to see. There are options, uh, that can be taken if, if there are no improvements, uh, but we'll just have to see.
I would agree with my colleagues, the, uh, I, I believe there was, there were changes happening at the first of the year. I think that, um, the, Mr. Howard, uh, brought in a lot of change when he brought in the state of Ohio. Uh, Ohio Department of Job and Family Services came in with a team to do training, to determine what was going on, what was happening, uh, what the problems were, they did that, they sent a team in, those people were in that building, they were working with the employees. Um, during that time, we also continued to see, uh, issues within the, in, within the, uh, Children's Services with turnover, uh, continued to see cultural issues that were occurring within the, the, that, and the board was addressing that. Um, you know, if anybody wonders, you know, what has changed, uh, there are some major changes that have happened as far as, from our standpoint. Uh, the board, um, seven positions on the board has changed since, in the last, I, I believe, right, within the last two years. Uh, we, we started demoifying problems well before, uh, the Dylan situation and, and well before Annabelle passed. Um, so we started down that path. It's taken us a while because of the, the requirements, um, of what it takes to, uh, change the composition of a board, and we've done that. In the same time, um, there was work being done by that board. Has that work been sufficient? Um, am I satisfied with all of that work? Not yet. Um, there's, there's a lot of things that could still be done, that need to be done. We've addressed those issues, um, there's more to address. We, uh, have made our feelings well-known as far as where we stand. Um, we, we, I believe personally that there, there is a lot of work left to be done. I believe that Jason is a change agent, I believe Mr. Mantell's going to do what it takes to move the, um, Children's Services, children, Children's Protective Services ahead. Uh, we need to make sure that we keep that for, at the very forefront of what we're, uh, what we're doing and what we're seeing there. Children need to be the number one priority. It's not about the adults, it's not about someone's feelings, it's not about, um, whose job we can protect, it, it, it's not about those things. Uh, we have to get past that, we, we must get past those issues, and every decision that we make must be through the eyes of a child. And we, we need to do everything we can to make sure we take care of those children. Uh, there's a lot of work to be done, uh, they are hiring more people, um, I believe that they are doing, they are reorganizing within the, the, uh, the actual Children's Protective Services, um, who, roles and responsibilities within the, uh, the organization on how, um, to, to protect our children better, to make sure that the policies and procedures that were already in place follow to the letter, and, uh, there cannot be any, any going back to the way it used to be, um, and there can't be any tolerance for that. Um, there are reasons why there's laws and regulations put in place to protect children, how to protect children, and to prevent them from going into a home, what we understand was squalor, just total squalor, and Annabelle shouldn't have ever been there to begin with. No one can convince me otherwise. So, uh, we have to, we have to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Uh, the full review of all the current cases is ongoing. Uh, I will tell you that, uh, when I found out that there was cases that, uh, we have children who are placed with individuals that have not received background checks yet, I asked for those individuals to be removed. I did that day before yesterday, when, I mean, uh, there, the, you don't know where, where that, they are, you, we don't know exactly. So, I, I have formally requested that, and I pray that they're working on that. Uh, we are restricted as a Board of County Commissioners to a degree that we, the governance of Children's Services is very much under that board, and there is law enforcement, there is judiciary, there's other forces that are, that are involved with this, and, um, you know, unfortunately, we can push, and we can push, and we can push, but at the end of the day, these decisions have to be made by the people that are on the front lines, and we have made it very clear what we expect. Um, am I satisfied in 2020? Not entirely, no way. Proof's in the pudding. We, we, we know what's happened. Um, we did revert back, there was policies that were not followed, um, and this cannot be, this, this cannot be tolerated in, in any way, shape, or form from here on out. And, uh, we're doing what we can as a Board of County Commissioners within the scope of the law to, to try to prevent these things from happening. The creation of the SVU, uh, is gonna go a long way toward that prevention. I believe that, uh, the prosecutor's office is right on the mark as far as what they're trying to do, um, and we are trying to foster more cooperation between our board, Children's Services, prosecutor, the judges, to make sure this never happens again. We live in a fallen world, and everybody needs to remember this. Everybody needs to remember this. At the end of the day, those grandparents, we, we think, you know, innocent till proven guilty, uh, were involved in the death of that child. And, and when it came to Dylan, uh, those parents were one hundred percent responsible for the death of that child. Can we one hundred percent prevent something like this from happening again? I don't believe we can one hundred percent because we live in a fallen world, and people do irrational, terrible things in this world. But by goodness, we need to do everything we can to prevent it, and up to this point we have not. As a county, we have not done that in a sufficient way, and we've had employees fail in their job duties, and we need to make that foolproof, we need to make it where no one, where you can't fail. In other words, there's checks and balances, there's dotting your i's, crossing your t's, doing everything you can, 'cause we can't afford to get that phone call again. We can't have that. For the sakes of the families and, and for the sakes of our community, we cannot have this anymore. So, we need to do everything that we can to prevent it. And I believe that there's that opportunity, but that window of opportunity is very small, and they need to act now in a very expeditious manner, and we're watching.
From Sin Mackley, Sota County Daily News. At the Children's Services Board meeting, Director Mantell said that his agents, agency could use more caseworkers, and he might consider asking the commissioners for more money. Is this something you'd consider despite the tight budget due to COVID?
I don't know if COVID has anything to do with it, but, um, at that board meeting, he did ask for the Children's Services Board to approve a position. Um, they did that within their budget, and they're still below their budgeted employee number. Um, their, their, their budgeted number is twenty-six, they, with these two hires, one was a financial person and one was a caseworker, uh, that would take them up to twenty-five. So, they do have a carryover. Uh, I was told by one of the, uh, board members that they are expecting, uh, higher revenue than what, uh, they received before. So, until we actually receive that request and the accompanying justification for it, um, I, I really can't comment on that. COVID don't have anything to do with it. Um, you know, one thing about it, COVID, if they are incurring costs at Children's Services because of COVID, uh, through the CARES Act, they can turn that in and be reimbursed. So, we're not really making decisions based upon COVID budget issues. We really aren't, and not at this point. Um, and when it comes to children, that wouldn't be a determining factor anyways.
From Mark Craycraft. Why can't, why can't the county purchase a large home immediately for the transitional housing for, of new children? The county could have the first transitional home to accommodate sixteen to twenty children up and running in less than ninety days. The state allows four children of the same sex per bedroom, which is two bunk beds.
Why, why can't we? Um, the, no one said we couldn't. We're working on it. We, we are literally working on that right now. So, we're, we're, what would really be nice is if we could have that facility donated and save the taxpayers money. So, we're working on that right now.
He must have missed the meeting the other day because we discussed it in the meeting.
Yeah, we discussed it in our last meeting about the transitional house, and, uh, we don't know what that looks like, if that's a house, if that's a church, if that's a, uh, a center, um, I, I'm not really, I, I don't think we're really stuck on what it looks like, um, other than it needs to be nice, and it needs to be clean, and it needs to be up to code. And that's one of the battles, too, is, is we have to, you know, meet regulations, but, um, I will tell you that there has been a ton of conversations since, in regards to this, both public and private, and, uh, there's a lot of support for it, and I was very glad to see and hear that. Um, can it be done? Yeah, it can. We need to find the, the formula, and we're talking to a lot of people to try to figure that formula out. Is it needed? Yes. Can it be done quickly? You don't rush into that, but we're gonna try. We're gonna try to get it done as quickly as we can.
From Amy Clark Barnhart. The Health Department seems to be stretched too thin doing contact retracing, follow-up, and reporting numbers. When school starts up, there will probably be more cases. Is there anything being planned to help them out?
Um, we have not received any correspondence from the Health Department requesting any help at this time.
From Mark Craycraft again. The Sota County Land Bank has nine properties open for bid. Those bids are due by August tenth. Have there been bids made on a significant amount of the, those properties?
I have not seen any bids yet. I'm not saying that there aren't any, but our director hasn't told me about any.
Uh, from Mark Craycraft again. Why are there no members of law enforcement currently on the CPS board?
Uh, there is, John Howard is a sergeant with the State Ohio Patrol. We have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn, or you want it?
No, are we not gonna, um, we have another meeting?
Okay.
Is that gonna be, we're just going to recess?
We can recess, yes.
I think we're gonna.
That's fine, okay. We'll, we'll.
We have a motion to adjourn. We can recess.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.